Good evening, we want to welcome each of you to our Board of Commissioners meeting this evening. We also would like to welcome those who are viewing us by way of television. We are especially excited about having all of these young ladies with us this evening, and we will be honoring them shortly. I call this meeting to order, and we shall now have our roll call.
We will now have our invocation and pledge. Commissioner Webb is going to do our invocation, and Commissioner McGlaughlin will do our pledge. May we all stand, please?
Bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to come here and join together as a community. Lord, we ask your blessings on this community. We ask that you give us your discernment, Lord, and your wisdom, so we make decisions on behalf of your people. Father, we ask these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Place of flag. Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion second. Let's vote. Thank you. We do have two public hearings. The first one is our Pitt County zoning ordinance amendment, and Mr. Rhodes is going to present that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have two public hearings. The first one is for amendments to the zoning ordinance. And one of many bills that were passed this past year through the NC Legislature was one to modernize the Board of Adjustment procedures. It was long overdue. There are a lot of changes that have come on board because of the rewrite of that particular set of legislation. So tonight, you have in front of you quite an extensive amount of changes to our zoning ordinance. These are all mandated through this new legislation. I'm going to hit some of the highlights. Would welcome any of the questions you might have about any of the particular sections that are being changed. First up, most of you are aware that the Board of Adjustment serves in a quasi-judicial fashion. Typically, in the past, it is required a four-fifth vote of that board to change any of the decisions that have been made. That's usually an appeal or variance of some action of that sort. That is no longer necessary except for variances. Variances still require the four-fifth vote. The remainder will be through a simple majority. Other changes, the Board of Adjustment in the past has actually interpreted some zoning map lines and property lines in certain cases. They are no longer authorized to do such. There's also some expedited appeal processes if someone withstanding has a need to hurry up, get a permit, look at some language in a particular way. So that's also now allowed. Couple of other changes. Notification. It is required that notices be sent out to property owners. We have been doing that in the past anyway. And also, there's specific requirements for moving forward and posting it on the site itself. There's also one other small or minor change to the zoning ordinance, and that was an alphabetical issue that we came across, and we do need to reorder the solar farm standards in the ordinance as well. So all that's included in your package for tonight. As far as the review process to date, the Planning Board has reviewed this at their September meeting, recommended unanimously approval. And also, the Board of Adjustment has been made aware that this is coming forward. Certainly, it affects them, so they were advised on all the details at their September 24th meeting. And so, we have two motions recommended tonight. The first one's to approve the proposed amendments with an effective date of tomorrow, and also adopt the replacement pages for your code of ordinances. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. I now declare the public hearing open. Is anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this amendment? Anyone who would like to speak against? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, there are two motions. Is it okay if we combine the two motions?
You may, as long as you say that.
I approve that we approve the recommendation of the Pitt County Planning Board pertaining to the ordinance, the two ordinance that has been presented to us tonight.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, you might want to read it out if you want the public to know exactly what those two motions. But if you don't, okay, good. James, you might want to tell the people what they are.
Well, I'll read them. It says, "Following the public hearing, adopt the proposed amendment to the Pitt County zoning ordinance with an effective date of October 22, 2013." And the second part of that motion is to adopt the revised language in the Code of Ordinance book and update the historical notes. And that's what we have just approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. James. The second public hearing is a subdivision, ordinance, amendments for street maintenance, and Mr. Rhodes is going to present that.
And this certainly isn't a new topic for you. As you know, the planning staff and Planning Board have been working on this item for way over a year now. We started studying issues with some roads that were having issues throughout our unincorporated portion of the county, summer before last, and actually did a survey of those roads to see what kind of shape they were in. Not all were in good shape. Just an idea, some of the ones that we ran across, some of the pictures on the screen now, are just some of the issues that we're seeing with potholes, the turn radii that are, in a lot of cases, have broken down pavement, and potholes as well. So you may recall some of our previous efforts in bringing you some remedies for these problems. We did beef up our enforcement mechanisms last year with some amendments that were proposed from the Planning Board. And at that time, there was also some discussion about other mechanisms to ensure or guarantee that these roads were maintained until the Department of Transportation took them over. Street Maintenance Committee was established earlier this year, met four times, came up with some good ideas about where to go with this after hearing discussion not only internal to that committee, but also bringing in various stakeholders, developers, the Department of Transportation officials, other landowners that were involved in these types of issues. What the committee recommended and was mentioned to you a couple of months ago was a three-point approach. The first being a financial guarantee. Fifteen percent was laid on the table at that point in time, and that was fifteen percent of the total cost of the road construction, not the overall subdivision development, but specifically for the road construction. Also, to ensure that small problems don't become larger ones, an annual inspection process and a reporting process, that staff would be involved along with the developer to ensure that things are kept intact. And of course, the maintenance violations section has already been updated, and we have a better way of enforcing that now with some ways of determining when streets fall out of compliance. The committee did unanimously support the three-pronged approach. There was some discussion about the amount of surety or financial guarantee that would be required. When it moved on to the Planning Board, the Planning Board unanimously recommended that it retain fifteen percent. And they also reviewed at that time the draft language that's in your package tonight for consideration for the changes. And that package, as I've mentioned, it will retain the fifteen percent of the financial guarantee. That is fifteen percent of the road construction standards or road construction cost in total. Also, the annual inspection program is included, and the road maintenance violation enforcement is also cited in that new language. So tonight, we have a public hearing for that, and what we're recommending is that the draft ordinance become effective tomorrow if it is adopted tonight, and also update the code of ordinances accordingly. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I now declare the public hearing open. Is anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this recommendation? Okay, come forward, please.
My name is Nancy Coville, and I already went in front of the Planning Board when this was presented to them, and I'm really excited about it because it's been long overdue. I think the part where the county planning department is going to go and inspect on an annual basis, to me, is very, really good. The other thing is that, you know, most of the developers are buying what they say they're going to do, and it's unfortunate that this had to come about. But the homeowners need to do their part as well. You know, when you buy a house, you need to, as I said, you may show it's your responsibility, and you need to be aware of the maintenance of streets and so on and so forth. So it's a two-way street. So I just hope that you accept it and don't make any exceptions. And so, when something happens, enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone who would like to speak against this amendment? Yes, please, come forward.
I'd like to expand. I'm Brenda Harris, and I have long followed many of the records of Pitt County. And I want to interject something. In Pitt County, if you were basing that fifteen percent on, quote, "what that road costs", there's more jiggle than jello in Pitt County. So we need to use the standard that is a state standard on what road construction is supposed to cost. And that way, the theory will be that nobody is treated incorrectly, and I solely agree with Ms. Coville. But in addition, you may need to understand something else about our developers. In the Woodmore and the Woodbridge subdivisions, which were a part of the reason that this came about, you need to know that the present use exemptions are being used by not only Maxine Spate but Mr. Woody Richard. And they're actually going back into a subdivision that has been parted out and sold, and they're saying, "Oh, we don't need to pay taxes of that next person. We need to be treated differently." And so, our tax department is going back. Look at the records, guys, for 2011. You'll find that Maxine Spate and Mr. Richard got a lion's share of many lots that were back out. They also got the county to fund some construction in their subdivision. What you're really looking at is an economic situation that the new developers are few, that are not bankrupt or gone out of business. And if you give any jiggle, especially in the way Pitt County has been done so many times, your ordinance are not, they're actually not enforced as they're written. They're enforced, that's who it is. So my suggestion is, is that the implementing of standards is a good thing, but use a state standard for what it costs for that road. And then, make sure that nobody gets the jiggle. And then, I want you to look personally into those subdivisions that have got lots that are exempt, and they're paying somewhere close to $800 an acre when their neighbors are paying 30,000 and 40,000. We need to go ahead. If we're going to correct part of it, let's get the slate clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here who would like to speak on this subject? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
James, who pays the fifteen percent? And if they don't pay it, what are you going to do about it?
The fifteen percent will be paid by the developer before approval. If we do not get that, we will not approve the subdivision plan, first up, so it will not be approved for recording. These are strictly for those subdivisions that have publicly dedicated street rights away.
All right. By going back to what has been said, who's going to set that? Some of it will cost more than others, we know that. Depending upon the soil type and so forth. How much structure got to hold in? Who is going to determine that?
We will get a cost estimate from a reputable contractor here in the county to ensure, and also, along with the project engineer, will forward to us the cost estimate for review. It's very similar to what we're doing now with the existing subdivision streets. There's a process by which we review those cost estimates.
So the county will not have to pay any tax, they blow on taxes money for this particular project, is that correct?
That is the intent, to avoid having to pay any in the future.
I don't want an intent.
That is the intent. I can't guarantee that fifteen percent will help guarantee it, but I'm not going to say in every single case that there might not be some way that it might be above fifteen percent. That was the debate about whether it should be fifteen, twenty, or 25 percent for the guarantee.
Now, we want everybody to understand also that these roads, and we have a lot of them in Pitt County, are not, in subdivisions, are not going to be brought up to what standards. Is that correct?
Two different processes, Mr. James. This is the one we're talking about tonight.
Yeah.
It's strictly for the new subdivisions in the future. The other policy we dealt with a few months ago deals with those existing subdivision streets.
Is that working?
We have not start, well, we've got a couple that are coming through the process, but we have not had one to bring forward to you for consideration yet. So far, so good.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ward?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we adopt this attached amendment language, and the effective date be tomorrow, October 22nd, and that we update the code of ordinance to reflect the change.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Williams, you can do it. Any additional questions?
One thing I'd just like to say, and I'm sure, James, that you've already done it, but I think it's really important that, in kind of a capsule, the information that is in this adjusted ordinance, we try to share it with all the developers that we, you know, know of that are active, and I'm sure they have an organization or whatever. But I know you've probably already attempted to do that, but I think it would be very important that we make an effort.
Okay.
The Home Builders Association, I guess. I don't know.
Okay, let's continue, vote.
Not the home developers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. We have two presentations. The first one is a resolution of recognition honoring the Pitt County Girls Babe Ruth Twelve and Under Team. This is a very positive thing for us to do. We are excited about your accomplishments. We hear so much in the news about what our kids are doing that's bad, and we are very pleased with the accomplishments that you have made. You have been a positive ambassador for Pitt County, and we appreciate that, and you keep up the work. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resolution.
Second. Okay, let's vote on that, please. And the manager and I will go forward and make these presentations.
We've prepared tonight a formal resolution as well as individual certificates for all the team members. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I'll read this.
Please.
Okay. It's entitled, "Pitt County Board of Commissioners: Resolution of Recognition Honoring the Pitt County Girls Babe Ruth Softball Twelve and Under Team. Whereas the 2013 Pitt County Girls Babe Ruth Softball Twelve and Under Team played softball with remarkable success and dignity as representatives of Pitt County in the state of North Carolina. And whereas the 2013 Pitt County Girls Babe Ruth Softball Twelve and Under Team earned a six-and-one victory against Santa Fe Florida on August 6, 2013, to win their eighth championship in the Twelve and Under Division. And whereas the players, coaches, and families of the 2013 Pitt County Girls Babe Ruth Softball Twelve and Under Team deserve congratulations for their time, effort, and resources they committed to going, quote, "all the way" in winning the Twelve and Under World Series Championship. And the following are the team players of the 2013 Pitt County Girls Babe Ruth Softball Twelve and Under Team. We have Gray Barrow, Marissa Roach, Lexie Phillips, Madison Deans, Alexis Phillips, Sarah Nemo, Lexie Vincent, Carson Criswell, Cameron Davis, Cameron Criswell, Ava Palmer, and Madison Bowers. For the coaches of the team, we have Bob Nemo, head coach, Rick Deans, assistant coach, Mike Criswell, assistant coach, and Jeff Phillips, protest person. And lastly, it says, "Now therefore be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes the outstanding achievements of the 2013 Pitt County Girls Babe Ruth Softball Twelve and Under Team, and congratulates the players, coaches, and families for bringing the World Series Championship to Pitt County, North Carolina, adopted this 21st day of October 2013 by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, and signed by the chairman, Jimmy Garrison, attested by the clerk to the board, Kimberly W. Hines."
Why don't all of you girls come forward with the coaches, and then we'll give out your certificates?
Yeah, if you'll make a semicircle around the area here.
Yes, I'm going to. I'm going to go and present this to the coach, I guess. Let me go on and present this to the coach. Very good. Congratulations. Thank you.
The certificates we have, let me read one, and then we'll pass out the balance. Says certificate of appreciation awarded to, in this case, Cameron Davis, for her participation in the Pitt County Babe Ruth Softball Twelve and Under League in on winning the 2013 World Series softball championship, presented on this 21st day of October 2013, again signed by our chairman, Jimmy Garrison. So Cameron Davis. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Marissa Roach. And, correct me if I mispronounce these names here, the coaches expression is daughter. Sarah Nemo, I'm sorry. Cameron Criswell. Lexie Phillips. Lexie Vincent. Ava Palmer. Madison Deans. Carson Criswell. Madison Bowers. Coach Bob Nemo. Assistant coach, Mike Criswell. Not here today? Okay. Assistant coach, Rick Deans. Protest person, Jeff Phillips.
Congratulations.
And we actually have two other certificates. Gray Barrow. Not here. Okay, there must be maybe two that are not going to be here tonight. And Alexis, I'm sorry, on the bottom, I'm sorry.
Congratulations. Again, we want to congratulate each of you. You are a fine representative of our community, and I encourage you to keep up the good work and stay here in Pitt County.
Thank you. Yeah, you all want to take these? Gray Barrow. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
The next thing is a presentation by Ms. Tucker and John Van Kietren on the Greenville Convention Center expansion and upgrades. Scott and I heard this presentation a couple of weeks ago, and we were very impressed, and I think that it is appropriate that each of you hear about the positive things that is going on at the convention center. Proceed.
Thank you very much. Thank you, county commissioners, for your time tonight and Pitt County. We have been the operating management partner for the Greenville Convention Center for the last 12 years, and have taken that facility from zero revenue to a ten-year term of 1.2 million in revenues at the Greenville Convention Center. But, as you know, as these young ladies that were just here, competitiveness is what the key is to success. And for our facility, being built as a $6 million facility 12 years ago, now competing with $60 million facilities in Wilmington, $38 million facilities in New Bern, and $122 million facilities in Raleigh, we have to move forward with our Greenville Convention Center with upgrades and expansion to be competitive in eastern North Carolina. We've got a real quick presentation, well, I think it's going to be quick. It was a 57-page PowerPoint presentation that consolidated down to 26, to try and, you know, encompass all the market research that was done, as well as what the proposal is for the upgrades, for the expansion of the convention center. We contracted a firm called LS3P with major project objectives. One is to create a facility that reinforces the vitality of Greenville and Pitt County to drive economic impact. Upgrade space to create a more upscale look, better compete for event business, maximize area and flexibility for seminars and breakout sessions, establish identifying brand through entry canopy with signage and sculpture element, develop interior finish to celebrate the influence of Greenville's history and Pitt County's history in an innovative setting, upgrade ceiling and lighting design in exhibit hall, upgrade HVA system to mitigate noise in exhibit hall, improve the flexibility while maximizing customer experience, and then upgrade the existing space for our market and customer needs. LS3P are the interior designers and architects that did the Wilmington Convention Center that was a $65 million project. They also have a marketing arm that went to and took the information we received from our guests that have attended conferences over the last 12 years, and listened to their feedback and came up with these recommendations. These are our major competitors in the state of North Carolina. The Corey Center in Greensboro, over 250,000 square feet; the Twin City Quarter in Winston-Salem, at 145,000 square feet; the Sheridan Imperial RTP, with 26,000; Wilmington at 47,000; Raleigh at 208; and then New Bern at 1616. These convention centers and facilities around the state of North Carolina are attracting 15 to 20 more conventions a year than Pitt County. So, New Bern, as you can see, the exterior aesthetics of New Bern Convention Center, the Wilmington Convention Center, and the Raleigh Convention Center, 38 million, 65 million, 122 million. This is a project summary of what we're proposing. Originally, we, as the convention manager, thought that we needed to expand our convention center to compete and have a facility that was 145,000 square feet. Well, after market research, the infrastructure, first of all, is not there, and what our campus is really known for, with 433 rooms on that campus, is a more boutique facility that can be multifunctional. So instead of doing an $8 million project of expanding a 20,000-square-foot ballroom and upgrading a 45,000-square-foot internal exhibit hall and additional breakouts, they came back to us and says, "Why build the pink elephant? You're going to be a regional convention center, you're never going to be a national convention center. This is what we recommend you do." They scaled it down to a $4 million project, which was in all the budgets and forecasting for OXXMEE taxes, so this is now going to be the scope of work. We're very pleased to hear that, and now it puts us in a sweet spot to where we can really compete. The yellow area is the existing 45,000 square feet of exhibit space. Understand, the total facility footprint is about 60,000 square feet, but we're talking about the high guest impact areas that we need to upgrade right now. So the 45,000 square feet space is 28,000 square feet exhibit hall, 12,000 square feet of pre-function space, and 1,400 square feet of breakout space right now. And that includes the lobby restrooms, four, and add additional two. The proposed expansion, as you see, is on the eastern side of the convention center, which is in between the Hilton Hotel and the exhibit hall. We proposed this expansion several locations around the convention center, but ergonomically, what the guests are saying is they want to have one continuing what the guests are saying is they want to have one continuous flow from the breakout spaces from the Hilton Hotel into the exhibit hall with breakouts on the way to an exhibit or conference space. So we had to go to the owner of the Hilton Hotel, which is Tom Glennon, and he has decided to gift that land to the city and we're actually working through the language with the city attorney and the real estate attorney to actually make that happen, for this project to take place. The expansion is actually going to increase and give us 10 breakout rooms of a total of 10,000 square feet, 10,780 square feet of additional space, and then a 4,600 outside outdoor terrace. Currently, these are some of the vision shots that LS3P is suggesting. One, the Greenville Convention Center was built without any kind of out front awning to protect the guests from inclement weather when they're standing in front for tickets. They're proposing taking the lettering down and doing a 100-foot awning that would be really artistically done in front of the convention center, so our guests would have some inclement weather protection. As well as the pedestrian plaza, they have a budget of $50,000 just for some lighting and upgrades in there to really make it pop. And then also using the interior lighting of the exhibit hall itself, the lobby area, and having ECU contract to do a major sculpture for us that we can illuminate to give the wow factor when you roll right past it. Whoops, I just hit off, I think. Nope, here we go. All right. Inside, textural experiences, guest impact areas, definitely do a wow. We gave them a budget and they came in and found materials that were in a price point that could actually work within the scope. As you see, I don't have a laser pointer, do I?
No.
No, but actually on the walls where the lobby is seeing, a textured wall of an accent tile we're looking to put downstairs, down right below where all the registration is currently. Definitely take the interior finishes to a much more richer, high-class finish. This is a 3D image of what they're proposing, either wood paneling down below or we add the accent tile with a textured wall covering above. Again, some of the visionary of the artistic sconces or chandelier that would be contracted to be delivered and manufactured by ECU. This is actually a real sample of the carpet they're suggesting, as well as some of the fabrics that would give a color pop for the furniture. One thing we did when we built the convention center, understanding this was originally a $17 million project. It was value, from day one, we value engineered it to a $6 million project. So a lot of the things that were cut out, one, as you can see, the A-frame ceiling in the pre-function area is basically an acoustical lay-in like this, nothing really special. We also didn't have any window treatments across the front and we had exposed brick. We're going to use that to our benefit now and create a really neat, high-end finish with using some of those same features. One they're proposing is definitely the carpet, window treatments, which are over here, textured wall covering on either side, upgraded light fixtures for LED and low energy, and as well as taking this wood paneling, they're going to create soffits. And you can see the visionary they've got of some of the lobby seating. People today, when they break from a conference, they want a Panera Bread, they want a Starbucks, they want to go hang out, they want to be wireless, they want on-demand, and that's what we want to give them. Here are concession areas. The concession areas, they've been fantastic to date, but like I said, people want open spaces. They want to break, they want to sit down, they want to have a cup of coffee, they want to look at their emails, they want to touch base, be on Facebook, what have you, and then also on social events. They want to use that for a multi-purpose event. They want to repurpose that whole area to a nice open space with pendant lighting. All the concession areas now, same things, okay? With some of the wall covering here, the wood paneling, and then we also have some of the, this is a 3D version of what they're suggesting here, which is creating this wood paneling, creating a soffit across, and then actually some.
Is the accent tile right here?
Where is it? Oh yeah, here it is. Some really cool, high polished accent tile. Again, these are finishes that are affordable, that will make the big difference, huge difference. And understand, on a board, it's all crumped together, but in 54,000 square feet, when it's at span, it's really going to make a rich look. The lavatories. Lavatories, again, we have basically four mic counters and vinyl partitions. They're suggesting a significant upgrade. If you've ever been into a facility and it feels real rich, the bathrooms are nice. And that is one thing we want to do. We have a solid granite stone here, glass backsplash, as well as accent tiles, new wall covering, and then wood partitions. One of the major things that we talked about is how do you make an industrial brick block wall facility with a steel, metal steel ceiling with halogen lights, gymnasium lights in there, have a real nice rich feel? One of the things they're suggesting is taking the acoustical panels and repurposing them and adding more, and also creating this into a multifaceted ballroom/exhibit space. Examples of ceiling panels, they can use the existing ceiling and hang a cloud in, and that cloud will actually hang right over the existing metal grids, which will allow us to redo, whoops, sorry, I did. This is what, one of the visions they came back with, which we really like, and it's actually getting rid of these metal, these halogen lights, which should take 15 minutes to burn to turn on, they're not dimmable, and then we don't have enough pendant lights for any special events that we're doing. This is a 3D rendering of what they're suggesting to do with using the wood paneling, accenting the doors and rolling doors around, as well as creating a real nice acoustical solid finish around the exhibit hall, which will be these panels right here, covered. This is kind of a rendering of what the ceiling and pre-function space would look like once completed. The grids is afloat, it's not, it looks like this on this grid, but it's actually not this kind of acoustical ceiling, there are gaps in between. And each one of those circles are LED chandeliers that will be fit inside, and each one of those dots are LED lights that are dimmable.
And color capable.
And color capabilities. The pre-function you can see now has those grid soffits, which will create a visual down of a rich wood paneling and then accent wall art along each side of the pre-function, as well as the concession areas being redone. One of the major complaints we were getting over the course of the years was keynote speakers. There's five sections of the convention center right now, and each one of them have one large, big unit that tries to cover 5,000 to 10,000 square feet. We want to hang that cloud ceiling and mitigate that noise by running spiral duct inside or flex duct inside that would quiet, mitigate the noise. This is one of the suggestions they're talking about. As well as noise mitigation, they're suggesting some of the panels, which are the floating ceiling, they may look all the same, it may look different, but that's what the engineers are for. Fire protection, we understand by, you know, putting a floating ceiling, sprinkler heads will have to be removed, as well as electrical considerations, the building has plenty of power, so we're not planning to add any electrical, we're just going to tap into what we have. And when we could light the city, for the concerts we used to do there, you know, there's just untapped power there, and so we feel like we have enough on property. Proposed expansion, this is actually, if you remember the diagram I showed that came up on the east side in between the exhibit hall and Hilton, this would repurpose the CVA's offices when they once determined a location where they were to move and move downtown or move out by the hospital district for their welcome center. EHM would vacate their offices, which is up to the, I guess would be the south, into the CVA offices, and we would reconfigure those two rooms to be breakout rooms. We'd also add 10 more breakout rooms. Each one of the ones on the south side, on this side of it, are 725 square feet, which we can do 100-people theater style in each one. One of the things that we listened to when the County Commissioners were here in 2010, as well as the League of Municipalities, is breakout space, and we know we needed more. This will give us the opportunity to host the League of Municipalities again, as well as the County Commissioners, which is coming in 2015, and we're very excited about that. This also gives us a 4,600 outdoor terrace and outdoor patio, which we feel is going to attract one of our largest major events that left us because they outgrew us. We did not have outdoor vending space, and now they do it at Raleigh. And I showed this to the President of the Company in this expansion, and he said, John, if you get this done, we'll come back to Greenville. This was a two-day event, filled up all the hotels in Greenville, and it was a trade show as well as exhibit show and had breakout educational sessions. This is the outdoor terrace. This is very, very, very popular in urban settings, and Greenville's on the rise. We're on the map right now, and people are looking at us for many different ways and many different options for conferences and conventions. We feel this would give us a added niche that Wilmington doesn't have, New Bern doesn't really have, as well as Raleigh being downtown urban. Current capabilities before expansion, I said five breakout spaces, seven total breakout possibilities, two breakouts under 1,000 square feet, five breakouts larger than 5,000. Convention center capabilities after expansion, 16 total breakout possibilities, nine breakouts under 1,000 square feet, two breakouts between 1,500 and 2,000, and five breakouts larger than 5,000. I want to put it in perspective, this is just one piece of the convention center campus. Understand that Hilton has 25,000 square feet of meeting space, that they did a renovation back in 2006 that added on additional 1,000 square feet, excuse me, 10,000 square feet of ballroom space. The Hilton has currently did, have done a $1 million renovation, half a million dollars in one of their ballrooms, half a million dollars in the Restaurant Village, and they've actually, two August ago, did another half a million dollars in their grand ballroom. The Hilton Hotel has actually talked with Hilton worldwide and is going to extend their Hilton franchise license to 2030, another 17 years. And in that Hilton franchise license extension will be another 1.6 to 1.7 million dollar investment in that property to take, turn, do all the rooms, redo all the rooms, courtyard and lobby area. There's, on total on-campus, the City Hotel, Hilton, Greenville, and Greenville Convention Center, we would have 35 breakout rooms, plus a 28,000-square-foot exhibit hall. That puts us in a huge sweet spot to compete, and we have a lot of conferences and conventions that have outgrown us that we can bring back now. Yes, sir?
John, you may want to point out the area on the left-hand side of the screen in the light gray is the actual addition area. You may want to have Risa.
Yes.
Addition, building space, and then the garden area.
Yeah, all that's new.
Right. And right now that's owned by John Glennon, or I mean, Tom Glennon.
Greenville Prime Investors, the Hilton, has that land. It's actually, part of the connectors is built on the Hilton land, and there's crossseams between back and forth, but this would be another gifting of that land. It's basically a half acre, I think it's .64, we had it surveyed, it's a .64 acres. Some of it is actually, Hookah Road eventually went right through there the whole time, so it's in kind of a right of way, so it's kind of, it kind of works out well, if we can work out the language. We'll leave that to the attorneys. Yeah, I just facilitate events. So doing the budget, we kind of did it as a developer's budget, basically saying the land, if it's worth five, half a million dollars, it'd be a gift of half a million dollars. General contractor expansion of 10,780 square feet at $150.36 a square feet, hard cost being somewhere around $1.62 on construction cost just for the, just for the general contractor expansion. Contractor expansion patio, 4,600 square feet at $21 a square foot, roughly 22, at 100 grand, and then the upgrade to the existing facility, 45,000 square feet at $31.78. These numbers are pretty close to what the Hilton has done with their ballrooms and their renovations internally. Of course, kitchen space, you're at $50 a square foot internally with the restaurant, but we've done everything really in a $32 to $33 square foot range. Furniture and sculpture, existing pre-function for new addition, 130,000, and a $300,000 contingency. So total hard cost being 3.58. Soft costs, which were going into architectural fees, site engineering, testing, building permits, interior design services, purchasing, legal fees, loan fees, and then contingency of 100 for a $430,000 contingency. The one great thing about this convention center that you guys did a long time ago is that this convention center is funded by a revenue bond. Not one penny of taxpayers' dollars goes to fund this facility to either pay for the debt of that facility or market that facility. So congratulations to you. This is going to be, how we're going to pay for this is currently the debt service on the facility is $4 million. It was a $6 million revenue bond, the debt was being paid down. Right now, money is pretty inexpensive. We've talked to financing with the city, they're going to refinance the existing debt of 4 million at a lesser rate and fold into 4 million on top. The projections of occupancy tax and the growth of Greenville and Pitt County is going to be able to afford this on the three cents occupancy tax that goes towards the debt service to the convention center. So again, zero tax dollars coming out of any citizens of Pitt County.
John, that'd be property tax versus occupancy tax.
That's right. It's occupancy tax, not property tax.
Just clarify that point.
But there are a lot of people from outside of Pitt County who are paying that.
That's right. That's right. We understand, you know, the convention center was built to drive economic impact, and over the course of, you know, the 12 years, it's put over 90-some million dollars of economic impact in Greenville. And we use the formula as a North Carolina Department of Commerce, Travel and Tourism and Sports, which is $168 per day tripper, and $168 per overnight guest, and $68 for a day trip. The multiplier is decided by them, and our multiplier in Pitt County is two and a half. So it's $168 times two and a half, that's the trick of dawn effect. If I came to a conference, spent the night, and went to McDonald's, I ate dinner, that money went to that restaurant owner and then paid for that person that worked there and then went down for the grocery store, that's kind of the economic impact model that we use. These are actual figures going all the way through 2012, 2013. We have four major market segments that we drive and market for. The biggest one is our conference business. We want people to spend the night overnight and use those facilities, entertain in our town, and use our restaurants in the county. So, understanding, I'm going to take you through it real quick. 23 million, 22 million. Last year, 2012, 2013 fiscal year, 24,111,000 economic impact. This year, we are proposing and hitting our target so far to do a 24,352. If we're in construction and we have a timeline that we feel that we can get done, we understand 2015, 2014, 2015 of being flat 24-5, and then exhibit hall managers is responsible for all the losses of that convention center. The city or the county does not pay for any losses. So it's going to be Risa, and Risa and her team, as the Director of Sales and CEO, to drive revenues by 20% going up. So we want to compete, and we're ready to compete because if you're not competing, you're dying. So this is the projected economic impact we feel we can have in the next 10 years, if we can do this expansion and the renovation. We have a timeline, we understand that Commissioner Webb is going to be initiated as the North Carolina County Commissioners President. We want to have it done and inaugurate in a brand-new facility for you, and we had a timeline of construction of 12 to 14 months. Talking with City and Public Works with Greenville, they think that we can consolidate that because it's only a 10,000-square-foot addition. I'm used to doing something a lot larger than that, so we think a 68-month construction timeframe could work. If we find that we cannot get it done in that amount of time, you know, we'll put a stop on it, but the interior hopefully will be finished, so you have a nice facility. We want to make sure it's awesome for you.
Don't let him think you're doing it for him, please. We can't, we can't live with him the next two years. The other question I had, or a question I had, if I can ask one, is the electronics, I know you said we were going to improve the lighting, which, you know, from day one the first time, I think we all realized that needed to be done, but, you know, the convention halls that we go in now, large or small, have the.
Electronic reader boards.
Yes, the TV boards and whatever, computer-generated and all of that, so we're looking.
Yes.
Yes, I figured that was just one of those things that you all had already taken care of.
Absolutely, that was one of the major things that we were talking about.
Yeah, I think that makes a big difference when you go and you can look over here when you can't see everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Short people like me. Thank you very much. This is, sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Mr. James?
John, I have a lot of questions and a lot of concern. First, in 2010, I was on a committee and I went to many of these convention centers, Winston-Salem, I met with those people. How many of these convention centers, and I mean, some of them was losing millions, how many of these convention centers that you're talking about make money and don't have to be subsidized by landlord and tax? I want all of you now to keep this in mind, and this is the reason, John, and our attorney, of course, it is supposed to be, and I support, I support what you're doing, so I'm not trying to get you not to do it, I think it's good, but I want you to realize that the city of Greenville took this project upon themselves in the year 2010, and the county, so to speak, got out of it, and Madam Attorney, I think you need to check into that because of what took place, but we support you.
Thank you.
And we believe that you can get your revenue then, all you have to do is add some more taxes to the motels. But at the same time, I want you to keep in mind, the Hilton, you need open space. Who's going to benefit primarily a great deal by this expansion? The motels that are closest by your convention center are going to be the ones that benefit. I found that out everywhere. They're the ones who can need to contribute more. If the Hilton can do it, they can do it, they can give you additional, they're not giving you that land free. You realize that, don't you? Of course you do. You're a businessman. Those who are closer by. You're a businessman, those who are closer by. But I think that, that this counter, the way I feel about it, Mark Owens was on the committee, he knows where I'm coming from, but we support you in your venture, whatever, and the reason that the counter got somebody on there is because we have to approve your taxes safely.
Yes, sir.
That's the reason. But we made it quite plain that we do not want the people in Pitt County then to go with adware and taxes to support this project. We believe it should be self-supporting, which is what you have in mind, and I'm sure this board recommends that too. But I think it ought to be understood, and you were saying the City of Greenville and the county pit, is primarily the City of Greenville. And the City of Greenville, they have the money, so they, they can afford to spend it for you. I wanted to bring that out, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chapman, uh, I wanted to ask one question. Will the vendors area be covered or housed, uh, that's, will have a roof or over them when they had the, when they had the National Free Will Baptist Convention here? Some of the vending areas was out in the open and it began to rain, and one of my wife's dear friend from Baltimore had brought down a huge number of those very expensive hats for those ladies. And, uh, I had given her a card when I was in Baltimore to a convention. She called me and we put a cemetery antenna up outside and somebody wanted to know how much was we paying for the advertised funeral home at that, at that convention? And I said, no, it was not, it was just a gesture of friendship to keep her from having those expensive hats out there, laying on top of those hat boxes from getting wet. And they wouldn't get wet no way if, if Peggy, if your mama could got back out there. But anyway, having said that, the breakout rooms, a lot of times when the people come out of the breakout room, the first place they head is to the vending area. If it's inside, and sometime the vending area, vending space was not enough for the number of vendors that were present, so they had some areas that was out in the open space that was not covered.
That's right. Yes, sir, this, this expansion will address ten thousand more square feet of vendor space that's attached to the exhibits.
Ten thousand more square feet of vending space.
Meeting space and vending space. There's air walls that separate those rooms, they can be retracted back to open those up into a five thousand square foot space as well as a forty-three hundred square foot space.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Next thing is our public addresses to the board. We have four people that have signed up. The first one is Andrew Fowler.
I'm actually just here to respond to the Commissioner's Use Permit Letter Extension, so I can hold off.
Okay, fine, fine. Okay, then, uh, the next one is Brenda Harris. Brenda Harris, would you please come forward, state your name and address?
Good evening, I'm Brenda Harris, two-two-two-three, Ashley Whip's Court. A matter of information. A meeting tomorrow with the Qualification Board regarding thirteen eighty-three Frankie Coburn Road. I put a formal complaint in against the Inspections Department. There has been some indications that they have an opinion. I am at the qualifications meeting to express to, to them how necessary it is to get the right information. An attorney told me that under a land sales contract, the General Assembly as well as the Court of Appeals has deemed that ownership is, in a land sales contract, is to some extent the owner, and you would have to foreclose, so we're in the process of getting that done. But in the middle of the issue, our county attorney should have known what a land sales contract was, because you actually took action against the wrong person. All right, secondly, I have been, I want to tell you that Kimberly Hines and Kate are as awesome. Anytime I ask for something, I get it quickly. As a matter of housekeeping, the, the hospital was transferred in, in nineteen ninety-eight. My information is it made close to a million, a thirty million dollars that year before. In fact, the records of the consent agreement say that in nineteen ninety-eight, it gave away twenty-seven million, six hundred and eighty thousand, and that was five point three seven percent. When I got the records, I looked at what two thousand and twelve was, and it was one hundred and seventy-two million, well, one hundred and seventy-one million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, which was six point five percent of the gross. That means that it had increased almost seven hundred percent, if I get my calculations right. But what concerned me is in these consent letters that Dr. Herman sent now and McCray sent before, that left the county with maybe seven, eight million dollars in his pocket, it concerns me because it always goes back to the adware and taxes. And, Mr. James, I'm proud of you recognizing that we don't want more taxes, but I got to tell you something interesting, I've got all the years from ninety-seven until today. Guys, you're, we have allowed our hospital to count bad debt and charity in the same balance column. Oh, that is not a good accounting. Ask our accountant that manages the county. So what I want you to ask our hospital that you gave away, I want to ask who as a trustee has their children working for the hospital or East Carolina? I want to know who you have that are family, three generations out, just like the Ethics Commission, that are benefiting from the hospital and the, the salaries that are done. And so what I'm saying to you is, I want you to get a definition of what bad debt is, because surely when you don't do the paperwork right and something is not paid, that's not bad debt. We have consent agreements and we expect the hospital to go by them. I'm asking you for the details every year. And by the way, when I got, Dr. Herman's wife was making four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year consulting, and that's why I'm asking. I think you might need to find out what his salary is, and I want you to know how it applies to the people that you burden with taxes. That's your assignment, Mr. James.
Not mine.
Thank you and God bless.
Okay, thank you. We have, um, Nancy Cobble is next, please come forward.
Again, my name is Nancy Cobble, my address is on file. And, Mr. Chairman, I have waited patiently two weeks to come back and tell you that I disagree with your comment that you were educating the public about the Pitt Community College Bond Referendum. I have here what you have posted all over the place, uh, which is supposed to be how you are educating us. Basically, all this, it tells us is that they have half the square footage that the schools have, that they need almost twenty million dollars, that it's going to cost us two cents, two, uh, cents of property tax. What they're, you're not educating the people about is that, for instance, in two thousand and ten, there was a limited obligation bond for twenty-two million dollars for Pitt Community College. We will have, everybody that says, what? We didn't know that? How did that happen? We are making a payment of over a one million point six from the quarter sales tax for this debt. And it goes on to two thousand and thirty-five, okay? So that it, they constructed three buildings, a technology one, an academic one, and a facility service. And then through private contributions and estate funding, they added a student center that accommodates two hundred, very impressive. I was there for the first time, uh, trying to get more information from Dr. Massey, and incidentally, Daily Reflector said, a small group of people, the truth of the matter was that there were three people there, myself and two of my friends. And two of us spoke against and asked questions of Dr. Massey. The rest were staff. So, you know, uh, in addition to that, the county, this year, fiscal year, is giving them over five million dollars. Okay, this is the kind of information that I wanted to have to make a decision on. This makes sense to me, that they have, uh, that crowded classes, when you're in college, some of those classes are a hundred, that's reality, that's what it's about. What I have learned going to, to, to listen to Dr. Massey is that forty percent of the students are from out of the county, that seventy percent stay in the region, that does not mean in Pitt County. Pitt County is part of the region, but, and that fifty percent of the students receive Pell Grants. You know, I, I am disappointed in the way that this board has conducted this, this whole bond referendum. First, you're, you reappointed Paul, uh, Davenport and Walter Williams after they did no longer qualify according to, to the standards that we have back on the board. Then you waited until the last minute to tell us that we were going to have a bond referendum on a municipal election, which is, it doesn't include the county people. And then, he, he, the, the Pitt Community College has access to your, uh, channel, nobody else, the public doesn't. I am disappointed, I will not support it, it, this is not about education. This is about creating bigger and better. If we are going to be a regional, uh, community college, which I don't object to, then we need to go back to the drawing board and see how to pay for it, because thirty-eight percent of the, of the population in Pitt County, which is the ones that have the, the, to pay for it basically because we own the property, cannot continue to afford it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, uh, that signed up to address us is Jenny Bryan. Please come forward, give your name and address.
Good evening, Jennifer Bryan, fifteen hundred Manning Forest Drive, Greenville, North Carolina. My name is Jennifer Bryan, I'm here from South Central High School, representing the faculty and staff there. November eighteenth through the twenty-third is American Education Week, being celebrated nationwide. And, uh, our school has chosen to participate in American Education Week by conducting the Education Engagement Project. This event invites community leaders such as yourself to experience a day in the life of a teacher. Participants in the Education Engagement Project will be paired on a day of their choice from that week with a host educator at South Central High School. Participants will have the opportunity to collaborate with the host educator in lesson planning, co-teaching, classroom management, and other extracurricular duties, from bus duty to lunch duty. The purpose of the Education Engagement Project is intended to demonstrate to our public officials and other community stakeholders the successes as well as the challenges that our students and our schools are facing. Tonight, I'm going to be providing you with invitations from our principal, Ms. Carey and myself, as well as a reply card. We simply ask that you check your calendar, uh, and if you are available to select a date in which you would like to participate, and return the reply card provided by November first. If you have any questions, um, I'll answer them now, or you may contact me by email, which I've provided for you in the invitation. And I invite all the commissioners, uh, particularly Commissioner Ward, Chairman Garrus, as you are commissioners in our school attendance zone, if I looked at my map correctly. So, uh, we just hope that you, uh, will all come out and participate and just, uh, take a step into our classrooms for a full day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's everyone that has signed up for our public address. So we will now move on to our items for report, and the first item for report is our Pitt Community College Report from Dr. Massey.
Chair Garrus, members of the County Commission, thank you for allowing me to talk to you again in my approximately twice, two to three times a year report on Pitt Community College. It's a busy season at PCC, and I'm going to outline some of the activities that we've been doing. This is the fiftieth anniversary of the North Carolina Community College system this year. You may remember that two years ago, we celebrated the fiftieth anniversary of Pitt Community College, because we got the jump on the, on a number of them with our Industrial Education Center. The community colleges pride themselves on technical training, on degrees and certifications, on short-term courses for new jobs or for promotions. PCC is already marked, as I said, fifty-two years, and the foundation for what we are today really depends on the leadership, the vision, and the hard work of some very important people in Pitt County. Robert Lee Humbert, Jr. was our first Board of Trustees Chair, and he was certainly a, a leader at the, at the state level. Mr. Raymond Redrick, who was a trustee until recently, was a strong contributor for us for many years, Vernon White, Ed Bright, and many others. It was their vision and creative resourcefulness, along with our instructors and staff, that have resulted in what the News and Observer called, calling the North Carolina Community Colleges, quote, "The bargain of the universe when it comes to advancing one's education." I thank you, commissioners, for your leadership and support for our accomplishments and our service to a broad variety of citizens in Pitt County. The most important thing that we do at Pitt County, at Pitt Community College, and our number one strategic goal, is graduation and completion of degrees and certificates. We don't want to just get students in the door, we want to get them across that stage of graduation into the workforce. We have seen a thirty-eight percent increase in graduation rates since two thousand and eight, far above our enrollment increase during that period. Our students in many areas have demonstrated their excellence. Our respiratory therapy students won a state competitive demonstration in their skills for two of the last three years. Our basic law enforcement trainings classes have scored one hundred percent on their qualifying examinations for both of the past two years. A home built by our Building Construction Technology Program, their students aided by trades in other areas, have, will be auctioned off this Saturday, and I invite you to come to the campus and view the auction and view the, the quality of what these students have constructed. It will be at ten AM on Saturday morning, and we'd also invite you to participate in a yard sale that our Honor Society is conducting at the same time. This is not something out of line, we do this every year, but I think that you'd be impressed not only at what our students have done, but also at the competitive spirit of high schools that are contributing to the event by competing in building a shed at the same location. Our employees are always searching for ways to provide learning opportunities for more Pitt County residents. We will be offering welding technology classes at Aiden-Grifton High School starting this winter. We've, we've been doing that at North Pitt High School, as you probably know, for many years. We have initiated a horticulture program on campus with a greenhouse, which you commissioners helped us make possible. And we have recently received an NC Back-to-Work Grant for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to prepare workers for the pharmaceutical manufacturing industry locally. We're also pursuing, offering more programming in Farmville and in Aiden, and we know that there are many other things that we can and should address in the years ahead. I thank you for the information that you have provided for voters on the PCC Bond Referendum on your website. I think it's quite accurate and complete, and I think you've also done the same in meetings with your constituents in Pitt County. The voting, voter response during early voting demonstrates the interest not only in our issue, but in the municipal elections overall, and I think you've noticed that the count so far has been double the count two years ago. PCC will continue to inform citizens of the positive investment in our county's economic and workforce development, which this referendum represents. And as a reminder, we are proposing two, uh, struc- And as a reminder, we are proposing two structures, and only two structures, in our referendum. One is a science building, a significant building of 70,000 square feet, that will enable us to expand our science programming, both for credit and non-credit students. We also will be relocating our basic law enforcement training program to a facility closer to the campus that will enable it to expand and also give us the opportunity to grow into our continuing education or non-credit offerings much more effectively. We've done over 70 presentations to local groups, utilized television, cable, print, and social media to communicate all elements of the issue, including the cost of .0185, less than two cents to the tax rate. That's less than two cents. The benefits in job readiness and job creation are substantial. We know through an economic impact study that we can expect 30,000 new and replacement positions in Pitt County by 2020. Over 40% of those positions will require the kind of training that Pitt Community College provides. So, we think that this is a sound investment for the future, and we thank you for your support, and we look forward to celebrating on November 5th the support and the passage of this bond. I'm open to any questions on these topics or others that you may have. Again, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I have one question, one comment. The Bethel High School is only half full, 50%. It's a good school. That community needs growth. They need help, to all of you. Why aren't Pitt Community College utilizing that space at that particular school? Have you thought about that, and did you realize that? I know you do. Most people in education know it's only half full.
You're talking about North Pitt High School, right?
Not North Pitt, Bethel High School.
Bethel High School?
Yes. Elementary.
Elementary.
I'm sorry, it's the elementary school. It wouldn't be the high school. Bethel Elementary School.
Well, we haven't pursued that, Mr. James, because high school students are the only ones that are eligible to take community college classes, and mixing the populations might be challenging, but I can discuss it with Superintendent Lenker and the principal there. If they are interested, we could pursue it. We are looking at expanding community education in other areas, and that might be a possibility, too. We are offering classes at the Bernstein Center, which is across the river, and we look to do more in that area, too.
Did you all build an addition to the Bernstein Center, or who built that addition out of that?
No, sir. That was done by a cooperative that included representatives from Greene County and Pitt County. We're simply doing the education programming at that facility.
The reason I'm so concerned, you know, I taught school at North Pitt, welding and so forth. I go across many of the trade schools there, and I know that there is a need there, that community, because of the water bills, their sewage bills, and they need help. Our attorney knows what I'm talking about. We even called up Raleigh pertaining to it. But I think it would be very advantageous to that community if that school could be utilized, because if something isn't done, let's face it, it's not going to be there. So, they need additional help, and it's a shame that that building, as much money as we have spent on it, it's not going to be utilized as it should. Of course, we're hoping that it will grow. I do, and I'm sure the people that are hoping that it will do also. But we might as well look at the future, because if they didn't already bring in additional students, it would probably not exist.
Well, I'm open to talk with Superintendent Lenker about that.
I would appreciate you and the Board of Education to look into it, see what, if there is any way that you could help them, so to speak.
All right.
Okay. Any additional questions for Dr. Massey? Thank you very much. We appreciate your report.
Thank you, Chair Garrus. Before I leave, if I could recognize trustee Paul Davenport, who's here. We're so pleased that he's with us, and he's serving on the Board of Trustees. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. To have a motion, we accept Dr. Massey's report.
Same move.
Second. Let's vote. The next item is our September 2013 Tax Collection Report. Ms. Booker is going to present that.
The Pitt County Fiscal Year-to-Date, which is July through September 2013, combined collection rate for real and personal property, as well as registered motor vehicles, is 63.60%, which is a slight increase as compared to the rate one year ago of 62.82%.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Who approves this?
I second it.
Motion second. Let's vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Captain, I don't know this answer. Does the Pell Grants pay any abdolent taxes?
I'm sorry, but I would...
Does a Pell Grant pay any abdolent taxes?
I would not know that without checking the...
They do. I've been told, but I best sell... I don't know. I was asked that question, and I couldn't answer, and I kind of would like to know. Let me know about it. I think they do, too.
I will check that.
So, I can tell these people that asked me.
Be happy to.
Okay. The next item, next item for report is our manager's report. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Terms of next meeting days, the month of November, the 1st and 3rd, Mondays respectfully, are November 4th and 18th. On the 4th, you have a 9:00 a.m. meeting. On the 18th, you have a 6:00 p.m. meeting. Item B, the boards the county are currently advertising for recruitment for, is the Pitt County Child Fatality Prevention Team, the Greenville Board of Adjustment, the Aiden Planning Board, and the Pitt County Planning Board. Item C was put on the agenda, and the agenda was printed prior to the deal being brokered and arranged in Washington, D.C. about the federal budget. We were prepared to come before you and to recommend some actions that needed to take place if the budget had not been brokered, and we actually have a document in place where that come first of the year in January, February, we can be a little more in front of the situation if we need to look at any type of furloughs of personnel or programs that we fund to external agencies or internal. So, we've kind of done our homework this time, and this will be good groundwork for first of the year. Hopefully, that will not be needed first of the year, but just in case it is. So, right now, we're anticipating no real effects from the shutdown here in Pitt County. Did have one other item that's not on the agenda. The Pitt Greenville Airport asked me to announce to you and the public that they are having a groundbreaking for their T-hanger number two, and this is kind of short notice, but it will be tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at their construction site at the airport. If you'd like more detail on that, I can give you a map and show you where that would be. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is our monthly financial report, and Mr. Holder is going to present that.
Mr. Chairman, we still need to complete the last vote. Mr. James would confirm.
Mr. James.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This evening, I'm presenting to you our monthly financial report as of September 30th, 2013. This report does represent one quarter, the first quarter of fiscal activity for the fiscal year. I am pleased to report that we continue to see positive financial trends against our base budget, which has been established through the month of September. We've collected revenues at a rate of 37% against anticipated revenues for the year, and our expenditures have come in through the first quarter at 22% of anticipated expenditures. There is somewhat of a difference in the current year versus prior year, and that's primarily due to two large revenue sources. The first one is we do receive an annual payment from the Board of Education for utilization of our space within this administration building. Those revenues had not come in as of the generation of this first quarter report, but we do anticipate that that was more of a timing issue with the receding of those revenues. That was about 300, and that's $340,000. And additionally, because of the timing of our sales tax accruals at year-end in the prior year, our current-year reversal of those accruals will be recognized in the month of October. That paper entry, basically, on the general ledger is about $900,000. It's not lost revenue. Again, it's just the timing of the revenue. We still ensure 12 months of those sales tax posting, but this current year as compared to last fiscal year, we continue to see same positive trend. We have received our draft of our fiscal year 1213 financials. I know Chairman Garrus has particularly been curious as to the results of that, and I won't release that yet because it is still in draft form, but we do anticipate within the next couple of meetings bringing that back to the board. And I will say that it will be a good news report in anticipating a strengthening of our financial position, which we think will reflect positively with our bond rating agencies and lenders. So, I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? On the, you know, before at the last meeting, this property may be come back at the next meeting. On the planning board, we did not have someone to fill that position, and I think I told you that Mr. John Appellin, now, would like very much to be on the planning board. We can't do that this time. We're bringing it up at the next meeting. Okay. I mean, we had him. I think...
He needs to apply, and then we can...
He's got it.
He's already done all that. All that's been done.
Thank you, Mr. Holder. I eagerly await that percentage. Isn't it much later this year than it has been in the past?
No, sir. Actually, we reported, and I just happened to be intimately involved with this because last week, I celebrated a year in this position. So, I was here last year at this time.
You lasted a year, huh?
I lasted a year. And actually, we reported our audited financials to the board the first meeting in December.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
I think he's actually waiting this long. I meet your expectations, actually.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion second. Any further questions? If not, let's vote, please. Thank you. Do I have a motion that we approve our consent agenda?
I so move.
Motion second. Let's vote. The next item is an item for decision, and this is a Ram's Horn Solar Center Conditional Use Permit Extension Request.
I second that.
Motion second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. Okay. The next item is our consulting contract for the Neuse River Basin Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, and Mr. Rhodes?
We've mentioned before, Pitt County will be the lead agency for a five-county regional hazard mitigation plan. We have secured funding through the state and the federal governments at a tune of 77,500. We now have gone through an RFP process by which we've also interviewed consulting firms. We have Holland Consulting planners that we're recommending to move forward as our consulting firm on this project. It will take about a year to complete the draft plan with these five counties. Pitt County's planning staff will assist with the mapping for the Pitt County jurisdictions that are involved, so therefore, we're retaining about 5,000 to assist with that. So, all said, we'd like to enter this agreement with Holland Consulting for 72,500.
Any questions?
Yes. It's a grant, of course. Where did that grant come from? Where did it come from, James?
Through North Carolina Emergency Management.
If any additional questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. Next item is the Unified Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Program, commonly known as the Buyout Program. Mr. Rhodes?
Very good. You may recall, we've had another opportunity now to put in a letter of interest for a buyout program here in Pitt County. Just to back up a tad, we do have two properties that have already been approved through a separate type of grant, and we'll be moving towards that once the grant contract is actually executed. So, those are actually underway already. This summer, we did get notification from North Carolina Emergency Management about additional funds being available for repetitive loss properties, and there's a whole long definition as to how properties qualify for that. Basically, they are repetitively flooded and also have repetitive losses and claims with their insurance company. What we did find out is that we have 14 properties that will qualify here in Pitt County. Of those 14, one was a severe repetitive loss, which does not require any local match. So, one property is moving forward in its separate application now and is being considered by the federal government. The remaining 13, however, do require a 10% match. And just to orient you as to where those properties are located, remember Pitt County, the planning staff does administer our flood damage prevention ordinance throughout the county and most of the smaller jurisdictions except for the city of Greenville. Therefore, there are some of these repetitive loss properties located within municipalities. Of the 13, eight will be within municipal areas, four in Grifton, four in Winterville. The severe loss property is in Aiden. It's in its separate application already. The five remaining properties are within unincorporated Pitt County. Didn't expect that one. Okay. We'll move forward with saying there's about $2 million total. Thank you. That is, we'll be moving forward with this particular project. While we think it's necessary, our current hazard mitigation plan has several goals in it that actually recommend that we remove folks and property out of harm's way. This program certainly would do this by taking these properties from development and putting them in open space. And certainly, one of the mitigation actions specifically is for acquisition and clearance, and thus what the buyout property does. We would like for you to consider tonight the 10% match. There are a number of ways, and I think the manager has mentioned that in his recommendation. Everything from our staff time, possibly waiving tipping fees, possibly getting involvement from either the homeowners or the municipalities. So, we would certainly recommend, from planning staff's perspective, moving forward with this project. We had to submit a letter last week, and we put in all these caveats that it was contingent upon this meeting tonight, but that letter is now with NC Emergency Management for consideration at your meeting tonight. So, Mr. Chairman, I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes. First, those that are in the towns or city, why aren't they paying at all, James? Why does the county take it upon themselves for those?
Well, that's open for discussion, Mr. James. Certainly, the municipalities...
They are benefiting us, at least go halfway with us.
That's a possibility. We have not had the opportunity to talk with any of the municipalities yet. We'd like to have this discussion with you first.
All right. I want to look at your map again. One place, there are two in the north of the river. One of them up on the other. All right, the one down there, the Penny Hill, at the end of the Holland Road. I don't quite, I'm very familiar with that area. What are you going to do there?
It's one repetitive loss property that we would move forward with buying out if there, it's a voluntary program now.
Wait a minute. Isn't that the end of the Holland Road?
That is actually on Holland Road.
That's right. There's no house there. It goes out to the Penny Hill Road. There is no house there, now, at that port of that road.
It's not exactly right at that intersection.
I have two houses right on the other side of Cunningham Creek, one on the right, one on the left. On by, I don't know who I, but this, I need to go back again. I'll ride by and find out.
We did not put the addresses out. We didn't...
I know exactly where they are.
But we'll be glad to share that with you if you've got a question about that particular area.
Well, I got a big question. Yeah. I don't get that. That's one of questions, something that I know.
We'll take a site visit, Mr. James.
Any additional questions? Any additional questions, Ms. Ward?
The comment you made about you wanted to share with us first before you approached the municipalities, so would that be them doing all or part? Is that what approach means?
That's part of the discussion tonight, what you feel like the county may can assist with, everything from waiving tipping fees, and some of these, it's not, we can't tell you right now how much that would be treated, how much that would actually account for as part of the matching funds. So it's going to be an equation of sorts between staff time, between the tipping fees, between any other local assistance.
So the, like what we used to call in-kind?
Yes.
Could go.
Correct.
Let me ask you, Mr. Rhodes. But that's kind of what we used to call in-kind. I guess you still do.
That is.
That could be part of that 10%.
Correct.
And you would also approach the municipalities that are involved to see what they could contribute?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it is a good thing. I believe that Pitt County will gain by it because it will up the value of these homes, you know, up the value enough so in abject and taxes that we will get, that we'll pay for more than what we will put into it. Do you follow me?
Let's actually remove the homes.
Oh, you're going to remove them?
Because it'll be.
I thought you were going. 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 I'll say no more.
Mr. James, this is very akin to the buyout program we had during Hurricane Floyd, so we would remove the homes. They would be bought out based off the current fair market value and could use those funds to purchase another home out of harm's way.
Oh, well, then you're serious when you buy those homes, that that's going to add more value to it. So I'm.
And just remember, the county then takes that land, and we maintain it in perpetuity. So that's going to go into our reserves here to take account for each year to make sure that it's being maintained appropriately.
Who's going to pay for removing the home?
That's part of the grant program.
So that's where you get money.
Demolition and clearance are included.
Still think it would be advisable.
Okay, any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we concur with this recommendation to approve the UHMA grant application.
I second the motion.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the appointment to the Pitt County Jury Commission. You see the recommendation of Mr. Ward Parker?
I so move.
Second it.
Motion second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. The next item is the appointment and reapportments to the local Fire Farmers Relief Fund. You see those names. There are three new appointments, 33 reapportments, and those names are listed on page 1661. What's your opinion?
I so move.
Motion second. Davis? Okay. Thank you. That ends our agenda, except for our closed session. We do have a closed session. Madam Attorney, will you take us into closed session, please?
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A4 with regard to economic development matters, A6 with regard to personnel, A3 with regard to attorney-client privilege, and A1 with regard to closed session minutes, based upon the specific language that is contained in your agenda package.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we will come back and have a motion to go into closed session. Thank you. Welcome back from our closed session. We have two items of business we need to take care of. Commissioner Ward?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for our chairman to be authorized to, for the settlement agreement with DSN Pharmaceuticals in a matter that went before the North, excuse me, North Carolina Tax Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second. Let's vote.
Is this the one I can load on? I can't load on.
You're.
Yeah. Make a motion we adjourn?
Do the meeting.
Okay, we have one item, one other item of business. Commissioner Webb?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve our minutes as to the content only for the closed session that occurred on October 7th, 2013.
Second.
Second. Let's vote.
Now you can make that motion, David.
Thank you. Now we will have our commissioner comments. Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one brief one attended the ABC Board meeting today. Sales are continuing to rise. We're still up from last year and making a payment to the county in excess of what they'd originally, not in excess of what we budgeted, but more than we were planning to for this quarter, which is going to help with our cash flow toward the end of the budget year as we move on to the next part of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McGlaughlin? No comment. Commissioner Johnson?
No comment.
Commissioner Owens?
No, Mr. Chairman.
The only comment I have is I want to encourage everyone to go vote on November the 5th. Now, you can start voting now, early voting, and we have those of us who live in the unincorporated areas. We need to go to the polls and vote our opinion on this bond referendum, and I encourage everyone to go vote their opinion. Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
No comment.
Commissioner?
I want to second what you said, Mr. Chairman. We need to exert our right.
Absolutely.
To vote.
Absolutely. Commissioner?
A motion that we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Okay. Push your button. Stand adjourned.
Then come get these off.